Prior to our meeting tonight, we had a technical session, Miss Helen, prior to our council meeting regarding ongoing litigation. Now I ask the supports for the residents who are in sign-in, please speak during citizens' request. Speakers are allowed in three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. Now the rule call, please.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock.
Yes, I'm Ms. Bullock.
Mrs. Sappio.
Here.
Mrs. Eiker.
Here.
Mr. Bichetti.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas will not be joining us this evening. Mr. Soborowski.
Here.
Mr. He.
Here.
Mayor Nellwach.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Here.
And Mr. Russ.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. All right, one of our citizens requests, and of course, we have Paula Kelly. Stand and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Paula Kelly. I'm the Director of the Whitehall Public Library, and I just wanted a minute of your time tonight to talk about something exciting that's happening at the library. So thank you for granting me a moment to announce some exciting news that I felt was important to share with Whitehall leadership and particularly fitting, given that today is Juneteenth. Each year, the Whitehall Library selects a book to encourage as many people as possible in our community to read and discuss together. Now, in its fifth year, this initiative is simply called Whitehall Reads. We are particularly excited about this year's Whitehall Reads selection because it's an amazing Pittsburgh story that happened just a few miles away from where we sit. And it's a story that very few Pittsburghers, or anyone for that matter, has ever even heard of, let alone learned about in school. I read it several months ago, and I haven't stopped talking about it since because I can't believe it took place in my city during my lifetime. The title of the book is American Sirens: The Incredible Story of the Black Men Who Became America's First Paramedics. Published in 2022, American Sirens tells the dramatic story of how a group of young, undereducated black men forged a new frontier of healthcare that quite literally became the gold standard for emergency medicine around the world. It's filled with dramatic characters, visionary physicians, community leaders, and the residents of Pittsburgh's Hill District who became this country's first-ever paramedics, known as the Freedom House Ambulance Service. It's a jaw-dropping story and one that is also deeply troubling because the reason so few know of it was because of entrenched racism and the calculated erasure of black history. Fortunately, because of the book and others committed to the legacy of Freedom House, more and more people are learning about the incredible, world-changing history that happened in our own backyard just a few decades ago. Finally, one of the paramedics strongly featured throughout American Sirens is a man named John Moon.
Mr. Scott, what's your name?
The book chronicles his journey from an orphanage in Georgia to a Freedom House paramedic to the now-retired Assistant Chief of Police of Emergency Medical Services. We are beyond excited to host Mr. Moon at the Whitehall Library, where he will be joined by Annette Banks, a WQED documentarian who produced and edited a 2023 Emmy Award-winning film, Freedom House: Ambulance, the First Responders. So save the date for July 30th at 6:30. Registration required, and in the meantime, please read American Sirens. You'll be wiser and richer for learning about this unique Pittsburgh black history that every American should know about.
We're counting on.
Thank you, and there are bookmark reminders on this little table.
Thanks, Paula. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Jane Cassiata, please stand, state your name and address.
Jane Cassiata, 5348 High Grove Road, and I'm up to speak about the last meeting. First, I want to say, my husband and I had a conversation with Mr. Soborowski in February about including comments at the end of the meetings. I said nothing else to any other council member so I could get their unvarnished opinion. At the time, Council President Ms. Bullock stated that the residents frequently give input during council sessions, but since the vote, I've never really ever spoken up during the meetings until last week. My opinion is that if Ms. Eiker does not approve of the conditions of the baseball fields, including the one at Overlook Park, Ms. Eiker should propose spending money on their improvement. That's why she was elected, not to request over 5,200 pages of ancient borough files that cost the borough almost $4,000 to gather. Thank you.
Okay, Jane. Moving on to Jessica Roverman, please stand, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Jessica Roverman. I'm the property manager of Hillside Apartments. I work out of there at 1577 Bevan Road. I'm just here to ask about some parking issues that we're having. So we just opened up about two years ago, was purchased under NWC Property Management, and they completely revamped, gutted the entire place, got new residents in there, and it's very successful. And we have parking out back for 78 total parking spots, but we have 73 total units, and at least half of them have two occupants that drive. So very quickly, we've run out of parking spaces, but Bevan Road does not allow parking between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. It has been really harming our residents, but they're getting ticketed, and a lot of them are lower-income, some of them, so they can't really afford the tickets. It does add up, and a lot of them will work and have to come home at night, and there are no parking spaces left for them. So I'm just requesting that that sign be taken down. I'm not sure why it was initially put there, maybe for cleaning purposes. If so, I'm happy to give council my phone number. I'm there nine to five, but my phone's always on. Again, property management, it never sleeps. So if you guys ever want to give me a call, if that is an issue, I'm perfectly happy to assist, but that's really the reason why I'm here, and thank you very much.
Okay. And there is the Borough White ordinance that they have restricted parking.
Just no parking on the street at all?
And there's hours.
Is it? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask right now. Should I wait till the end?
On one side, one side of the street is always no parking. The other side of the street is no, there's no parking only between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Residents can call into the police department and request permission for their vehicles to be on the street for overnight guests or when there's some type of renovation going on on the property. We generally limit the request for overnight guests up to three days.
Okay.
And then for construction projects, up to seven days. Now, if somebody needs additional time, they call in with legitimate reason, we do extend it. My understanding, I haven't been here since the borough started. I've been for the last twenty-some years that I have been here. My understanding is this is the longest time of working. It's for snowmobbing. It's also to make sure that the streets are open to emergency vehicle access, but it's also a way for the police department to keep track of who's in the community overnight in case we have to follow along on crimes that occur.
Is there any way to swam what side of the street it's on? And again, I can wait till the end.
It wouldn't do you any good.
It wouldn't do you any good. Then it would put no parking 24 hours if you're side of the street.
It already is on, oh, 24 hours? Oh, okay.
Yes, the other side of the street is 24 hours. Your side of the street is 24 hours.
Okay.
What makes this really hard? We have people that have very short driveways with multiple, with many children who have cars, and they're, you know, begging to, and it's just been really hard to deal with that situation. And so now you, you know, you have an additional, I don't know what to, you know, what to tell you. I can tell you that it's come up before, and if the chief has told you why the ordinance is in effect. Is there any other place where cars, you know, could be located, any other, you know, apartment buildings nearby? Can you take advantage of some of their parking?
You mean like pay another location to utilize their parking space?
Maybe they, you know, make a mutual aid, we park on yours, and then if you have an overlook, you can park in ours. You know, see what you, I would advise you, see what you can do to develop some additional parking. Maybe the tenants with the second car have to, you know, utilize that parking or something. Just know that it's very hard for the elected officials to make an exception for you when so many other people have been turned out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mary Rose Chassler, please state your name and address.
Mary Rose Chassler, 111 Steeplechase Court. I have a question about the gas station, or the former gas station in Castie Village. So a while ago, the tanks were taken out, the construction fence went up, there was plastic around the fencing, and then nothing has happened. And the plastic especially is starting to sag and come loose and, you know, be an eyesore. So I just wondered how long Castie management gets to have a construction fence with no construction and no obvious repairs or movement on that property?
We didn't even discuss them with them. She kind of just.
Oh, okay. Today, a lot of fireworks, and that was an item that came up, and I believe the chief is walking property, for fireworks, but on Monday, that's.
Castie management actually checked in the whole gas station out. The reason why that, the reason why the fencing went up was for fireworks last year. Those pumps were removed at the, you know, before fireworks. They put all that backfill in there. We were concerned that the fill might sink, and there'll be holes, and the amount of people that leave Castie Village at night, we didn't want somebody to walk through that parking lot, twist their ankle, injure a knee. So they agreed to put a temporary fencing around that area. They had actually had, the tarp was up the whole way around, and we suggested that they drop it down in half so that we could have a clear line of sight of the way in the road so that nobody would sneak up to us or we could see that there was a problem. When we positioned for fireworks, we referred to as our commandos. And today, our conversation is we were going over the plans for Castie Village fireworks, what's up with the fence, and they're kind of looking into it, and we all know more.
Is there anything with the code, like the village, the borough codes of how long you can just ignore it?
It sounds to me, it sounds to me like we asked for it, they put it up, and nobody thought to take it down. And so I think it's just a matter of, you know, this communication with Castie, I think, is going to change.
They were alluding to the fact that there is a liability issue because it's uneven surface, so we asked them to look into it. We actually asked them to maybe, you know, fix it obviously before fireworks and then make a decision what they're doing wrong.
Fireworks is June 28th, right?
Yes.
Your fee day's too early with your question.
Yes, Helen, yes.
On the same subject, Hal Plusa, 4647 Doverdale Drive. There is that entry right there by Geonovias and where the gas station used to be. A lot of people are using that as an exit now despite the sign that's there. And that, to my way of thinking, since I live right by there basically, is definitely a safety hazard overall, particularly people that are pulling out of that entry and making a left turn onto Baptist Road.
Okay.
If we were to install a turning restriction, we would have to go through the state because Baptist Road is the state road. I believe those signs that are in place were placed by the Castie Corporation at some point or Oxford Development. We have had conversations with Oxford and Castie. Once they figure out what the final use is for that property, you are going to have to kind of correct that whole point because they're going to be talking about, talking about, you know, open seating for a restaurant, for a parking lot. One of the first things that I suggest is you've got to put ballers or something on because you have people moving at a decent speed up and down Baptist Road, and you can't have them drive through whoever's in that parking lot. And I don't think they, and they haven't really figured out who or what tenants are going to go.
So that should be addressed soon, some communication and thing. Just to remind everyone here that July 3rd, our council meeting's been canceled, so the next time we leave is the 17th of July. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. And next, we have Donna McCray. State your name and address, please.
Donna McCray, 305 Southview Drive. Today, I'm here representing the Baldwin-Brettwood Whitehall Safety Division to thank especially the Whitehall Library for helping us put together the Creek Creatures Program for their family night on last Monday. We went down to the Little Creek, I don't know if you've all been down in there, but there's a little creek below the tennis courts that is a nice shady little place. We had a very nice turnout of children and their parents down. We brought, actually, we brought Tree Pittsburgh in as experts on the subject, and they took us down to the creek to look for anything that we could find, little worms, little melipides, and we were very fortunate to have a resident of Whitehall who's also a biologist with this little boy, and he gave us some very good information on identifying what we found. But I wanted to point out to council and Whitehall residents that that creek is, has life in it. We found salamanders, we found crayfish, and we found, you know, other little bugs and things that are important. We, I think it would be in Whitehall's favor and benefit to try to start developing the creek area as a place where people could sit in a nice shady area and listen to the water and maybe clean it up a little bit so that they, we don't have runoff from pollution from pesticides and herbicides going into the creek. I think we would have a very nice environment. So thank you to the, especially the unity for organizing all the advertising, and thank you to Tree Pittsburgh, who are not here. Thank you. And just to remind everyone, that creek is an asset that we could enjoy in the community for many, many years to come if we would appreciate it the way it is. So thank you.
And thank you, Donna. And we move on to our bills and payable, Ms. Burks.
I would like to note that $30,688.11 was spent on salt this June in order.
Recreation, Mr. Soborowski.
In order.
Library, Mr. Soborowski or Mrs. Eiker?
Mr. Eiker. It's in order.
Thank you. Sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Eiker?
Um, in order.
I would ask for a motion to keep the bills on the bill list from the general, from the general fund, totaling $132,227.11. From the sanitary sewer fund, totaling $13,201.97.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the second, some part.
I'll second. You'll second, I know. I'll make a motion.
Okay. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I would also ask for a motion to approve checks and transfers to be ratified from the general fund, totaling $61,403.68. From the payable fund, totaling $55,472.80 for grand total ratification in the amount of $116,876.48.
Real motion?
Second.
Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Also ask for a motion to approve payroll for a date of June 14th, 2024, in the amount of $207,431.36.
So move. Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Good. Thank you. We need approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, and then we approve the minutes of June 5th, 2024.
Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, thank you. From the Court of Mayor Nellwach.
Madam President, if you're not all disappointed, but the animal report for May is not available. It'll be here next. On June 3rd, an officer injured his shoulder while assisting an individual who was experiencing a mental health crisis. The officer's scheduled for additional testing in July. There's no anticipated return date at this time. On June 11th, Whitehall Police assisted the Officer Attorney General to serve the search warrant for illegal firearms at 1838 Parkline Drive that resulted in an officer-involved shooting. No Whitehall police officers were inside the building when the shooting occurred. Allegheny County Police Department is handling the officer-involved shooting investigation, and the Office of Attorney General is handling the illegal firearm investigation. Whitehall Public Safety officials and Borough Manager met with the representatives of Castie Oaks, as we reported earlier, this afternoon to finalize plans for Castie Oaks fireworks. The event is scheduled for Friday, June 28th, 2024. Officer Joseph Lacco notified the chief that he will be on military orders July 24th and 25th. Moving along, I'm going to ask that council stay for a bit after the meeting to discuss the awards for Community Day, those being Good Neighbor Award, Community Service Award. In person here, we may or may not make the decision tonight, but we'll at least start the discussion, so I'll ask that everyone has some common understanding, section, section of discussion. All right, I issued a block party approval for Ranger and Augusta on August 3rd, 2024. They had, I think this might be their third year in a row, I'm not so sure, but they have had block parties in the past. I'm pleased to say that there will be some movement on the solar panels. The issue that was holding everything up has been, I would say, resolved but addressed so that now we can move forward, and I can, I don't know if we're planning to bring this up in the report, but court, you will be meeting with Connect to try and get that moving forward.
Yes, I'm going to be able to submit PAs over tomorrow. I don't have much to report right now, but until July, I'll have a report.
Next, next meeting, we'll have. Okay, as requested, I issued the Juke Day confirmation, and Skip, you of the fire company.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. For, since the last council meeting, we've had 51 calls, bring our tone this year to 349. We're currently 69 calls ahead of last year's record call volume. The shift crew responded to 20 daylight calls. The shift crew in the fire company participate in many school-ending activities as well as several community activities. Earlier this week, we visited South Hills Interfaith Ministries Summer Camp and helped cool the campers off after we showed them the fire truck. Our current membership is 34 active firefighters. In addition to our regular training that we hold weekly on Thursday nights, several firefighters have taken individual classes in vehicle rescue, EVOC, Emergency Vehicle Operators Training, and water rescue. In addition to our regular calls, we respond to two serious accidents, one on Route 51 and another on Provis Road. We appreciate the protection, support, and cooperation of Whitehall PD to maintain a safe working environment for our firefighters. Not all fire protection agencies receive the same luxury as we do at Whitehall PD. I can attest that when I've gone out of town fire, we have to watch ourselves for it, and we're grateful to Whitehall PD on how you protect us each call. Our gas leak calls have seemed to drop off in the past few weeks. Our new fundraising tip board is up and operational. At present, we are raffling off two kayaks and an Xbox for purchasing tips. Our mailing fund drive will start in the next two weeks. We launched an earlier email online campaign, and we've already raised $9,000 for that. We are working, we're looking to purchase a new fire chase vehicle to help with the state fire commissioner's grant. The only way we can qualify for this grant, which doesn't make sense, is to go into debt by purchasing the new vehicle. Due to high resale value, promising vehicles electric, and the first responder discounts we receive, we feel the time is right now to replace the five-year-old vehicle. Finally, we'd like to invite the mayor, council, and their families to stop by our station before the Castie Village fireworks. At this time, we will be having our family picnic, and we'll be serving barbecue. Thank you, councilmen and cheney, for attending our meeting this past week. Our July meeting will be on Monday, July 15th at 7:00 p.m.
Thanks.
That's, thank you, Skip. That was great, and we should put in a pitch for the fund drive. Everybody, talk to your neighbors. I'm waiting for the business fund, fund drive to go out, to present a couple of checks to the fire company, but we'll, I think we'll be doing that at the next meeting, so.
That's a great idea, the kayaks. I just think cool, when you think kayak.
Yeah, the raffle tickets are almost sold out, and so it's going to be, it's not much, but it's going to be additional income.
It is, yeah.
I'm worried.
It's good, though.
Where are you buying, where are you buying the raffle?
It's, it's actually off our Facebook page, it's online.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's all, Ellen.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for the mayor? Okay. Move on to our listeners, report, Mr. Furman.
I do not have a report, Mr. Furman.
Thank you. Engineer's report, Mr. Russmeyer.
Thank you, Madam President. The report's dated June 14th, on page two, under the 2024 operation and maintenance, just in the council, where the 2024 projects will be advertised beginning of March, and we'd be looking at a good date of August 1st. Under item four, overlooked park, work continues to occur there as contractors are taking advantage of the, of the good weather. There is coordination that's ongoing at the moment between the plumber and the general contractor to have the sanitary and the water line installed down the narrow access while other work is being planned. We do anticipate wall construction to start next week after several pours of concrete this week. Caliber Contracting submitted their sixth pay application for work completed. The application has been reviewed and it is in order. Work completed under Pay App 6 includes wall demolition, sidewalk, bulk excavation, storm sewer, storm water tank, rough carpentry, playground equipment, supervision, and general project requirements. Recommended motion is to approve Pay Application 6 in the amount of $162,136.14 for the overlooked park improvements. Contract one, general construction, Caliber Contracting Services Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I'd like to say something about Overlook Park as well. All of us did, when was our walk group?
Six.
Two weeks ago. I just wanted to report that they're doing a phenomenal job. I couldn't be happier. You guys are going to be really thrilled with the fun project.
That's what we want, right? Okay, it's going right back. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
No worries. Hanlon Electric got submitted their second pay application. We reviewed that application, it's in order. Work completed under this pay application number two includes electrical rough, electrical rough in, fixtures, lamps, panel boards, transit, excavation, demolition, and conduits. So the recommended motion is to approve Pay Application two in the amount of $10,496.64 for the overlooked park improvement. Contract two, the electrical construction to Hanlon Electric Company.
So move. Second. Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Under item 10 on page three, the pool, just to make council aware that the pool cover specifications have been completed, and we will be forwarding the advertisement to Alyssa so that it can be published. Under item 14 at the bottom of page three, as we previously reported, we have submitted letters of intent for the Alka-Sand grow grants for the manhole-to-manhole lining projects as required under our current consent order. All of the LOIs have been approved, therefore, the next step in the grant application projects that are due June 30th are for council to adopt resolutions to submit for those grants. So the first one we're going to start with is to adopt the resolution of five for grow grant for the Whitehall Borough Streets Run Source Flow Reduction Project 2024-01-03.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to read the resolution in its entirety.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Borough Whitehall of Allegheny County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is seeking great funding for the Allegheny County sanitary authority, meaning revitalization of our waterways program to fund a project that proposes to reduce the sewer overflow at the Alka-Sand Point of Connection and for issues of sewer shit. Be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall requests a grow program grant from Alka-Sand to be used to help fund the Whitehall Borough Streets Run Source Flow Reduction Project. And be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall is hereby designate for the M. Works Borough Manager and Alyssa M. Regala Assistant Borough Manager as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Borough of Whitehall and Alka-Sand to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. And be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall will commit to a budget allocation of $400,000. allocation of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for the project to be used to cover the cost and expense of the project. I, Courtney M. Works, duly qualified manager of the Borough Whitehall, Alabam County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregiving is a true, correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote at the council. The regular meeting held June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the Borough Whitehall remains in effect as of this date. I ask for a motion to adopt Resolution ten thirty-six.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Can I ask you a quick question? For this grant, rights, is this somebody on administrative staff? Is this done by?
It's a grant application through Alka-Sand that we put together.
Oh, so, yeah, so it's working with.
The engineer, you probably didn't get information. Okay, the motion made second. Then we'll call please Ms. Buck.
Yes.
Mrs. Pugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Aker.
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti.
Yes.
Mr. Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, the, the second of the three resolutions that we need to review this evening is to adopt the resolution to apply for a grow grant for the Whitehall Borough Streets Run M. Forty-two, MBL fifteen Source Flow Reduction Project twenty twenty-four oh one oh thirty-two.
I ask for a motion to read the resolution in its entirety.
So move. Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries.
Be resolved that the Borough Whitehall of Alabam County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is seeking grant funding under the Alabam County Sanitary Authority, bringing revitalization of our waterways program to fund a project that proposes to reduce the sewer overflow at the Alka-Sand point of connection and forty-two sewer shed. Be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall requests grow grant, grow program grant from Alka-Sand to be used to help fund the Whitehall Borough Streets Run Source Flow Reduction Project. And be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall is hereby designated for the M. Works Borough Manager and Alyssa M. Regala Assistant Borough Manager as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Borough Whitehall and Alka-Sand to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. And be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall will commit to a budget allocation of one hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents for the project to be used to cover the cost and expense of the project. I, Courtney M. Works, duly qualified manager of the Borough Whitehall, Alabam County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregiving is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote at the council and a regular meeting held June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the Borough Whitehall remains in effect as of this date. So I ask for a motion to adopt.
I got a question, Courtney. What's the difference between, first one and then this one?
Different projects agreed and funded amount.
Can I ask a question? The funding amount is the twenty percent that we are asking for, is that the full?
That would be the maximum.
That they would give.
Be granted to.
That they would give.
Potentially.
Thank you.
Okay. So I ask for a motion to adopt Resolution number ten thirty-seven.
So move. Second.
If there's a motion, second. We'll call please.
Ms. Buck.
Yes.
Mrs. Pugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Aker.
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti.
Yes.
And Mr. Aker.
Okay, and finally, a resolution needed for the grow grant for the Whitehall Borough Sawmill Run Source Flow Reduction Project one twenty-four oh one oh thirty-three.
I ask for a motion to read the resolution in its entirety.
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Be resolved that the Borough Whitehall of Alabam County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is seeking grant funding under the Alabam County Sanitary Authority, bringing revitalization of our water, waterways program to fund a project that proposes to reduce the sewer overflow at the Alka-Sand point of connection, manhole eighty-nine sewer shed. Be, excuse me, manhole eighty-nine sewer shed. Be it further resolved, the Borough Whitehall requests a grow program grant from Alka-Sand to be used to help fund the Whitehall Borough Sawmill Run Source Flow Reduction Project. And be it further resolved, the Borough Whitehall is hereby designated for the M. Works Borough Manager and Alyssa M. Regala Assistant Borough Manager as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Borough Whitehall and Alka-Sand to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Be it further resolved, Borough Whitehall will commit to a budget allocation of five hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents for the project to be used to cover the cost and expense of the project. I, Courtney M. Works, duly qualified manager of the Borough Whitehall, Alabam County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregiving is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote at the council and a regular meeting held June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the Borough Whitehall remains in effect as of this date. I ask for a motion to adopt Resolution ten thirty.
No motion.
So move. Second.
Motion made second. We'll call please.
Ms. Buck.
Yes.
Mrs. Pugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Aker.
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti.
Yes.
Mr. Zabrowski.
Okay, the last item, just to bring council up to speed on, is on page four, under the Wayman Road Storm Sewer. We have been coordinating with National Gunite Roto-Rooter to complete the inspections of the hundred-and-two-inch corrugated metal storm sewer, as well as the seventy-two-inch and sixty-inch storm sewers, all near Prince's Lane on a quite opposite, or nearly opposite village lane. I did attach a quick little sketch in that report that was color-coded, so you can review and see where the sinkhole is located, right near the parking area, just downstream of the very large manhole vault. National Gunite is able to make those repairs to the pipe as possibly as early as next week. The repairs to this pipe would be approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we're recommending authorizing National Gunite to make the emergency repairs for the twenty-five-foot section immediately downstream of the manhole vault. I guess there's a consensus of council as far as to make those repairs, emergency repairs.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the seventy.
Doesn't seem like a whole lot of money.
Well, that's just a repair to the pipe itself, and that's only twenty-five feet of the four hundred and, four hundred and eighty-five feet that is gonna ultimately be needed. So what we would do, we'll recommend that your budgeting time, the budget for those repairs, that section of pipe was all installed nearly the same time. In the mid-eighties, an additional five hundred feet of that pipe was installed further downstream. It's in much better shape. So ultimately, the Borough, five hundred feet of that, five hundred-foot section of that large diameter pipe has gone and need attention, and it's approximately two hundred thousand. So we'll talk about that at the budgeting time for your consideration then. As far as the sixty and seventy-two inch, I reported earlier that they had combined an estimate to do both, the repairs of both of those pipes. I've asked them to separate, separate those. As the seventy-two inch that crosses from Prince's Lane, and if you're looking at the plan, it would be in that, that green highlighted color, it's in far worse shape than the sixty-inch. However, the hydraulics, and looking at the plans and, and in the field, the hydraulics of this section of pipe, it's just, it's terrible. You'll note, if you can see in a small scale, going into the seventy-two inch, there's a forty-eight, I'm sorry, a forty-two-inch concrete pipe, as well as a sixty-inch concrete pipe that drain into it in obscure angles. So in order to make those repairs, that seventy-two inch, they would be considering a full circumference lining, essentially putting a pipe inside of a pipe. I don't like to do on the sanitary sewers with the PVC liners. So this would be a cementitious that has a thickness of approximately three inches. So essentially, we're taking flow capacity away from that pipe. And before we make the repairs, I want to run, run the hydraulics on that to ensure that we're not causing more of a problem in that area. That's the area that is first to back up and the first to flood.
Yeah.
So I want to review that. And there may be a possibility that we could justify reconstruction of that, if we can improve the hydraulics and improve the flow of the sewer pipes. So I'll be making council aware of that, hopefully at the next meeting in June, or July seventeen.
July seventeen.
Yes. And Kathy, just to put it in perspective, when we talk about budgeting time, approximately two hundred thousand dollars to repair that, the end part of the bottom of the pipe on that large diameter, to reconstruct that is in excess of a million dollars for four hundred feet of pipe. So it makes sense to do this line in that situation. That's all I have this evening.
I do have a couple of questions for you. So, this is a map where the watershed of what is known as Baldwin Manor comes down across to Castie Village. And I understand that there's a culvert there.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, that's why I'm, I'm sorry. And that, the culvert that would go under the road would be, yeah, about here. Does that connect with the watershed of Wayman? Or is that some, somewhere else downstream?
Yeah, this all drains to Wayman. This whole area drains through it. So yes, it does, it does drain there.
So what, what is exactly the, the scope of your investigation? Because it does sound very thorough, and, and I'm not denying that it is perhaps even well overdue. But I just want to, to get on the record, the scope.
The scope of the investigation, starting with the worst first, is the sinkhole that is in the parking lot, right off, along Wayman Road. That's what initiated the investigation and the internal inspection of these large diameter sewers. That scope of that attached exhibit, to our report, we had, we've inspected a thousand feet of the one hundred and two-inch corrugated metal. We've inspected approximately sixty feet of the sixty-inch that's shown in blue, seventy feet of the seventy-two inch that is shown in green. I'd make council aware, that sixty inch that you see that drains to the seventy-two, that flows underneath of Castie Village, underneath of the buildings. That is the next step in the investigation. As far as just determining to ensure that that pipe is in the issue.
Uh, yes. I, I would like to, to know if it is all possible with full due diligence that the, the pipe, the culvert under, on the Baldwin Manor side would be part of that.
That pipe is relatively new.
Yes, I understand.
That was installed during the Doverdale project, and the Doverdale project essentially separated from draining into the existing sewers on Wayman, from that to down to where this problem is. It's a new, new storm sewer that bypasses all of the old existing.
Yes, yes. I, I understand that there's a tank that needs to be more manually cleaned out, and there's also public works that will manually clean it out as, as need to happen with that sewer.
I don't, as far as the tank, the tank is located in the meadow, right opposite Doverdale. It's due for an inspection to see if it does need cleaned. It has been, I think, five years since it has been cleaned.
Yes, yes. I think that's in the budget. That's why I'm asking.
Yes, that we would typically bid out. Cause it's a series of sixty-inch pipe. It's a network of pipe.
Yeah, well, I, I'm interested in the order of operations, not to say that anything necessarily shouldn't get done. I think it should all get done. I'm just interested in the order of operations on it.
Okay. As far as the culvert, the culvert that passes from the stream underneath the parking area to the intersection, what, the problem at that location is not the pipe capacity. The problem is, is the trash rack that was installed for safety, as requested by the residents. It catches debris during high flows, whether it's the lawn, the leaves, or just, you know, mistakes, twigs, and logs that flow. That's what causes the culvert that appear to be backing up. The culvert's fine, once the debris is removed, the culvert has full capacity.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and, and the public works guys, as I, served with my own eyes, are doing a, a good job at keeping up with that. I, I just wanted it to be on the record.
Understood. And I believe the, their directive has been every Friday, they, they inspect that end wall, to ensure that it is open and every, after every sizable vein. So that's on their weekly checklist.
Yes, that, that seems to be consistent. I also have another question about this, where, which is for, for everyone here, not, not necessarily for Scott. So I understand this is gonna come from the, the storm sewer budget, in that we only have a certain amount that was budgeted specifically for storm sewer emergencies. Are we classifying this as an emergency, or are we classifying this, it's just an overall extension of what happened with Doverdale? And therefore...
I don't know. The sinkhole was an emergency. The other items that are responsible have been referred to as something we'll discuss in November budgeting.
Okay, so it wouldn't be immediate. We're just going to address sinkhole immediately, and that's the, the forty-some thousand dollars.
Approximately thirty-seven thousand, yes.
Thirty-seven thousand, okay. Fantastic, then. It, it's, it's tight, because that's pretty much using all of the emergency budget. But it's an emergency, and we need to do what we need to do. Okay? All the questions?
I'm gonna move on to our wheelers report. Mr. Furman.
Okay, Ms. Buck. The first item of my report is in regards to the student hold concessions agreement. If you were at the pool today, and you might notice that the third-party tender has been secured. Resident Sylvia Stomilova and Jenny Aker started today. So staff authorized, recommends authorizing the proper Borough officials to sign the attached concessions agreement for twenty-four to twenty twenty-four season.
So move. I have a question before we move on. So what happened to the old third-party for the residents?
He quit out, no, it's a few weeks ago.
Okay. Now we don't have any.
Well, no, the new individual started today, from the agreement before council, which I explored.
So this agreement says, we're not gonna get, we're not being able to keep any of the proceeds generated from the stand, and we collect zero dollars and zero cents a month for rent? Why, who came up with that?
This is a historic agreement.
I know, it's been a stupid agreement from the beginning. So do you think?
Since we can't find anyone to operate it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, so we said, we can't find anybody. But whenever I made a motion to have Baldwin residents come, you guys said, there's too many people, we can't do that.
Whitehall, you're not able to storm.
So you're, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not. So you're telling me that no third-party concession person wants to bid on this, when there's so many people that we can't even allow Baldwin residents in?
Yes, you gotta see there.
So we.
They have their homes, they're gonna storm. It's not a set income. They can't depend on that income.
So we have to keep the utilities and all that, everything for that?
You could get a year where the concession stand can only be open ten hours out of the whole summer, because.
Because of weather.
Because of the weather.
I think that's, and even though you don't like the historical aspect, that's how it's always been done. We're just happy to have someone responsible and be here for the folks that come to the pool, which our Whitehall residents this year, if we could bring guests, you know, that's always been the same.
Yeah, Mr. Zabrowski, it really was a sublet. I see this as a sublet of a continuation of the, the agreement from the previous.
So how many years have we had this open? Oh.
Newble?
Yeah, the newble.
This is the second year.
This is the, the first year.
Well, last year was abbreviated, opened in July. So we wanna see this year, it's been jam-packed every day, cause we've been blessed with good weather to use it. And everyone should know by now that the Whitehall resident can sponsor someone outside of the borough. But we just don't feel comfortable, at least I believe that our consensus was, to let this full year, this full year, last July is when the board, and this, we all know. See, I mean, it's, we have these Whitehall residents here, and if they wanna bring someone in, they can, to a point. But, you know, this is how it's right smoothly until someone, you know, designed from the concession stand. We're happy to get someone here to work it for us, for the, for the residents to enjoy while we can.
And we had lengthy discussions on this, that we were not seeking grant money for this purpose. This is for Whitehall residents.
That's not the point of what I was making, though. I said, so the borough has to, if we don't collect rent, we don't get any proceeds. That's, that was the parallel I was making. That we have so many people, but yet you, we have to give away this spot, you know, and, you know.
It's a service.
It's a service to the people. We're never gonna make, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we make money off of it. We're never gonna break.
It's never profitable.
It is a service that we provide to the community for their benefit. Just like this, the, the concession, this is a service to them.
Yeah, but from a business. Yeah, but from a business perspective, I would think, like, if I was a concession stand guy, I'd be, oh, yeah, I'd gladly pay, you know, utilities for giving you some sort of proceed, I don't, I don't think the borough should just roll over and just say, you know.
Well, no, that's something that we have to facilitate, so, so, so we have a motion.
Well, just to give you a grid, I mean, going back, you you put out a request and uh people proposed, and it was?
Yes, we put out a request for proposals last year, we only received one. Uh, we put out another request for proposals again, only received one. Um, after the last third party quit, uh I spent three days calling the over twenty people, went through the uh, the chamber was high enough to lend me their food truck lists, so I started going through that. Um, I was fortunate that these, either residents of the borough, they are uh pool patrons, they were aware of what was happening. They reached out to me, they had all their guts and order insurance, um, you know, everything, the health department lined up, um, had great letters of recommendation and they really started pretty much immediately. So the idea was to give the money back for the residents.
But then you guys said that we're like fully staffed with lifeguards and stuff, we don't have anybody that could?
Well, that's, that has to be certificated though, that too, you know, I mean, it's just, can't have someone standing.
Yeah, um, well, that would be involved in more time of loss of the service because then we would have to create new positions and go on and, and
Right, and it just.
And this, this is basically an emergency sublet situation, we can discuss the terms of the lease for next year. But um I I have another question on um the this particular contract and I I I just feel that it should say that it it starts uh June nineteenth because that's when they were able to to come on board and provide services, not um the date of of May. And I, if if Mr. Solicitor says that there's no, no problem with it, then I can be appeased with it.
I think it's a new agreement, we are, it's a close, it's a typo.
Yes, I mean, the the agreement's been as of the expression.
Yes, yes, eh I I see that it was a a copy and paste of of the last um tenant's agreement um to to go ahead and provide these services and it is very unfortunate that the first vendor did not work out. Um, so, but here we are.
We're, we're ready.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mrs. Pugh may have motion.
I'll second it, yes. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
About a pose, but I'd like to get this relooked at next year, hopefully we can.
We will.
Uh, next on my report is in regards to property maintenance code ordinance, I've got a public display for two weeks. Uh, this is ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-four version of the International Property Maintenance Code as published by the International Code Council. Um, so I'd ask for a motion to read the ordinance in some form, uh and then I'll ask for adoption.
So, who?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, please read.
The ordinance of the Borough of Whitehall, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth Pennsylvania, offending chapter seventy-five of the Code of the Borough of Whitehall, property maintenance by adopting the provisions of this twenty twenty-four International Property Maintenance Code as the property maintenance code of the Borough of Whitehall. I ask for motion to approve, uh, or excuse me, to adopt ordinance number eleven seventy-four, or excuse me, eleven seventy-nine.
So, who?
Second.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Motion made, second roll call, please.
Ms. Book.
Yes.
Mrs. Pugh?
Yes.
Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Lechetti?
Yes.
Mr. Soborowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beef?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that is all that I have, Mrs. Warts.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warts. Assistant managers report, Mr. Kepa. Okay, thank you. Now we have our committee reports, recreation, Mr. Soborowski.
Thank you, um, I do wanna start by thanking the administrative staff for the amount of help they had done when I was out, especially Mr. Gallo, she had really stepped to the plate and helped with pool passes and things of that sort, so I do appreciate that. Um, so getting into everything, the recreation department hosted their first concert in the park um on June eighth. It was a huge success, we welcomed over three hundred guests. Um, I actually got phone calls from Baldwin, Bretwood, Jefferson Hills, and Pleasant Hills from their residents saying they came, um, and they had a wonderful time, so they're gonna keep that on their radar for more events, so that was great. Our next one is coming up um this Saturday, the Generation Gap, it's on the twenty-second. So food trucks are from five to eight, the concert is from uh six, seven to nine, I apologize. Um, and the Generation Gap is a genre of all generations, so anything from the fifties all the way to the two thousands. Um, so if you can come, that would be great. Um, summer camp started on Monday, is off to a great start, so if you drive past any of the parks, you'll see tons of kids from nine to one. Um, and it's going tremendously, today we had over three hundred kids at all the different parks, so it's going great. Um, the team party, pool party uh was postponed because of weather, so it will hap- end on June twenty-first, which is this coming Friday, from six to eight. Um, registration is required, chaperones for the recreation board will be present and we do ask, we did ask the police to stop by if they could. Um, it's a five dollar in the um registration fee and that will give them access to the pool, um, two slices of pizza, a drink, and then the DJ services. We have some fun items like glow-in-the-dark beach balls and things like that, so I think it'll be really fun for the kids. Um, June twenty-ninth um is DJing the pool during the pool hour, so if your family wants to come up and enjoy some music, that that'll happen then. Um, I know we were just talking about the pool, so I do wanna update you on some stats. Um, the twenty twenty-four pool season has been an absolute huge success. To date, we have sold over thirty-one hundred passes and people still stop in daily to um obtain their new pass. Um, we are averaging about five hundred people a day with an average of four hundred and fifty dollars in walk-in admissions on weekdays. Um, weekend walk-in admissions, we average about eight hundred dollars. I was just up there this evening because we do have water zumba, unfortunately it got canceled from the weather on Monday, so it did start this evening. Tons of people up there, um, I did get an update, we're about a thousand dollars in today for walk-in admission. So there are a lot of people in the pool. Um, I know in the first hour I checked today, there was already a hundred and twenty people just in the first hour. So the pool is definitely getting used, especially during the day and then at night when when parents are home and people are not working. Um, as I said, zumba classes have started, water aerobics has started as well. Um, the the ladies and gentlemen are loving the instructor. Some people actually requested to have all four classes, even if they signed up for two, so um it's going really well. But, um, yeah, so I think that's all I have, any questions, concerns?
Just a compliment for you, Paul Rennie?
Yes.
Thanks, uh, said to say hi, and said what a great job you did.
Thank you. As always, done right before.
I I have a quick question, uh, I heard something about an adult pool party going to happen later in the summer, when might that be?
That is going to be on August, I apologize, I cannot see that far, the 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 twenty-fourth, I believe that is?
Is that it?
Yes, yes. Yes, so um adult-only pool party will happen on August twenty-fourth. Um, there are many other activities that we have in the pool coming up, live band at the pool in August, there's gonna be a movie in the pool in July, so just keep your eyes open on the Facebook as well as the website.
Great.
Thank you.
My next, we have our public works report, Ms. Iker.
Okay, uh, as usual, this is done with community input and not from anybody who works for Public Works or anybody who works for Whitehall Borough. Okay, I participated in the Creek Creatures and I did um observe life for myself and and that's a very important to the the matter of storm swords, which I also report on the budget. So, um, what eh I learned from that pool experience is that when you prevent erosion with trees and other plant life around the streams, we get clean water. We like clean water so that we can invite our residents and guests to to go ahead and partake in in that space in leisurely activities such as a creek walking party, that was fantastic. And I I want to thank the Tree uh Shake, Tree Commission and Tree Pittsburgh for for putting that very educational experience together for us as well as the the library. Um, I wanted to note that um the mesh that was installed there was working as appropriately and I would like to ask um Public Works to continue to 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 keep an eye on that to make sure that it it doesn't shift o- over time because it is doing a great job in making sure that vegetation will continue to grow there. Um, so, um, there was a a lion's bench that was um donated to um Whitehall Borough a couple of years back. I'm not discussing the one that is in- installed in front of the administration ingress, but um there is some perhaps concerns that it may have gotten lost in Public Works whenever things were being stored and acquired for the Overlook Park. And uh because we are self-storing all the Overlook Park playground equipment that will be um installed this summer. So I would like um just uh for Public Works to have a lookout, if that happens to surface, then great. Perhaps we could even put it down by the creek, that would be spectacular. Okay, um, there was um the emergency clean eh and camera work that was actually on the sanitary sewer budget this time for three thousand and forty dollars. And I would just like to ask, um, was uh the backdoor truck that we are utilizing, or renting rather, from the shake-off agreement, was was that at all um helpful with this? Or did we completely outsource this to to state state pipe?
This was outsourced to state pipe, the Public Works' road?
Yes.
That was a backup.
Yes, that was a backup that was outsourced.
Okay, and Public Works was not able to handle that?
No, that's why it's outsourced.
Okay, um, great to know, um, i- if possible, Ms. Warts, please prepare a report on the backdoor usage for the July meeting.
And we use it as schedule review, that's scheduled set by shake-off, get it for a weekend time.
Okay, um, I I often see it parked eh in um the the area where uh folks might park for the pool or the the tennis courts.
That's the old backdoor truck.
It's the old backdoor truck.
Yes.
And are we able to utilize the old backdoor truck at all?
No, it's inoperable, that's why it's used to park.
It's inoperable and it's consuming a parking space that uh the people who would be using the swimming pool would very much like to to enjoy. Uh, Mr. Beef, i- is there any way that that we can um get this off of our bur- our for- property since this is an inoperable vehicle?
We have a meeting tomorrow night, I'd like to ask, that's that question.
Fantastic, thank you, I appreciate that, Ms. Beef. Okay, um, so I I was, um, it was called to my attention that the Stiefel Chase residents, specifically their ward, would like to have their fire hydrants painted and they believe that this is a function of Public Works. Can you please um submit that request, Ms. Warts?
I don't believe that's a function of Public Works, we've never done that, that would be damaging the water, fire hydrants.
So, um, to to just state that for the record, that you you believe that that is um a function of PNA American Water to paint the fire hydrants? Okay, um, I I will so noted, um, I I honestly did not um drive by to to see what, exactly what they're talking about, but I assume eh that there would be some some standard in which they they have to be painted to make sure that it's a public safety issue, so, um, M- Mr. Brown, if um you and I could talk offline about that, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, the water company is totally responsible for all maintenance of the uh our fire hydrants, we have a problem, we have to call the water company and address it.
Okay.
Could you, could you follow the water company and ask them to take the hydrants and stuff?
I will ask the chief to go around and look at, look at them and um then he can call, you know, call.
Since he lives at Stiefel Chase, I hope so, I hope so, okay, fantastic. So, um, I I understand that it is a function of Public Works to remove outdated eh signs like, um, uh, there there were some thing about um removing of um signs saying deaf child area, for example, when um the the person is no longer living in our community. Um, so I I think this is probably more of a a matter for um for public safety, but um eh since the the representative is here from um the the area in in question, um eh that that's of um the Prospect Park area, um, that eh the eh intersection of Skyline and and Parkline that's nearest the management company, that there is um some resident sentiment of the um single-family homes that live on um eh the the other side of of the street. They they believe that there used to be a no parking sign there and it may have been accidentally removed.
No, parking signs shouldn't be accidentally removed.
We can look and see if there is a sign there, the issue is that there was never a sign there?
Yes.
We just can't arbitrarily go.
Yes, yes, and and the resident definitely understands that eh she would just like you to um check your historical records regarding any no parking signs that may, well, the the, yes, that that's what are. Yes, yes, eh eh exactly, exactly, thank you, that that would be greatly appreciated. And I I understand that it wouldn't be um a Public Works issue, but there is a um badly um eh sun-washed sign that says um no ball playing. And there there are a lot of children in the area who who like to to keep the balls around there. May- maybe it would be a good idea um to install a um soccer net elsewhere, but, um.
Where is that, Beth Lynn, you mentioned, where?
So thi- this is around Parkline and Skyline, there's this intersection here and then there's some shrubbery here.
And there's a, that's why.
And and between the two pieces of shrubbery, that there there are kids who um wanna to basically pay, play a half-court soccer. And eh.
You have, I believe it's private property or something along. Yeah, I mean, that must be ours.
Eh, yeah, yeah, I I do believe that it's uh private property, but I I do believe that perhaps we could discuss eh the the option of eh having a place where there could be pickup games in Prospect Park in the old ball field. Well, while the the Prospect Park uh of the municipal park, otherwise known as Wallace Park, is municipal grounds.
As far as their activities, I mean, that's up for those folks to pursue.
Well, eh eh it would be scary if it was my child, but I'm a mother and and I care. Um, so there there was that item and um there was um a demonstration that I conducted last time about a recycle bins on wheels that uh could be easily and cheaply um done where without any um necessity of Public Works picking up and moving the cans and emptying the cans and moving the um eh the materials from one place to another. And it was discussed in in points before that perhaps we should do a pilot study only at Brennan Plaza because it would, should be easy enough for um Public Works to go ahead and unlock that recycle bin toter at the appropriate time and go ahead and and push it to the curb because I do believe that they are eh in Brennan Plaza often enough. So, um, eh that that's my ask, it it really shouldn't take really any money to to go ahead and do this or eh really much of any time to go ahead and do this.
But the Public Works already takes care of the garbage.
We get it. We get kids.
I'm fine with putting two new trash cans in the barns.
I believe that the environmental committee was looking into that.
I guess true, too.
Anthony did ask them there.
To put up an experimental.
Yes, so, as, as I had demonstrated, that one could use, uh, one of the, the toters similar to what we have now and if, since it's going to already be changed to a fence or whatnot, um, we would have, uh, little risk of it, it growing legs. We would have little risk of it tipping over because it's far more sturdy than what we are currently using for trash-free septicals. And we're, we're talking about, oh, keeping it under a hundred dollars rather than over a thousand dollars.
That's something we'll look into there with the.
Yeah, one thing that we are, uh, putting into, I, I, which, which, five times, um, apparently waste management does something, you know, on a, on like a short-term temporary basis. So, for instance, um, Community Day, if we wanted to, you know, just put up special, you know, containers, uh, for Community Day, it's my understanding, don't hold me to it, that's one of the things that I have to find out. Do you know?
Okay.
So, uh, I, I, I wanna find that out, if they can do it on a temporary basis, that's, that's one thing.
Okay.
And then, um, obviously, uh, uh, if you have an idea of how to get, uh, cans in there, we're, we're looking. My idea was to do the pilot at Union.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, only because I can monitor that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Since I've worked there, uh, so maybe we can do, um, if, if, uh, waste management does something for Community Day, you know, does events, we can find out about that and have that done. And then, in terms of a pilot project, uh, I thought Union would be good and there's, you know, there's a lot of, uh, softball playing there. And we'll be starting up in there, uh, following to the summer league.
Well, that's great, Mary, if you can pursue that information.
I'll push that in, a garbage toter and a recycle toter there.
All right.
Start our pilot program.
That'd be great.
Can you recycle that?
We didn't have the, the, I, I, we find the funding for it, so we're working on that.
Well, I, she just said the three ones.
So, that, is that the report, Beth Lynn? Um, eh, no, no, thank you for asking. I, I do have, um, eh, two more things.
All right, two more things.
One is, um, the, the twenty-fourth is still going to be the Public Works' public meeting. Our agenda is, is still going to be the, the formation of, eh, the committee for, eh, citizens who have, um, time and talents. And who knows, well, maybe we might be able to, to get together or approve to paint over the, the concession stand in Prospect Park. Um, because that, that is badly needed. Okay, so our next thing, yes?
I, since I give you a heads up, I have a work commitment, so I do not know if I can make it on the twenty, the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
June twenty.
June twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the Tuesday?
Uh, it's a Monday.
Monday, it's a Monday?
Uh-huh. June twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
I think it's on my account, I'll double-check, I'll shoot you.
Public Works Committee is scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
Oh.
Oh, for the twenty-fifth.
So, Tuesday the twenty-fifth?
It's unavailable, Mr. Vee, are you still?
Yeah, I'll be out in a minute.
If it won't be a form, then what was that? How would you, I guess?
Excuse me, e- excuse me, that, that is somewhat disrespectful.
I'm going out of time.
I know people have vacations.
I, I, I have been discussing this. I've been discussing this for two months. I've been discussing this for two months. And then all of a sudden, oh, you don't think you can make it?
I didn't say I didn't think, I said I can't.
And then, that means that I, I'm not allowed to conduct the, this meeting?
Beth Lynn, if you don't have a form, no, not on the twenty-fifth anyway, so.
Well, then that...
What's your next matter? You have another matter?
I, I, I will definitely respectfully request then that it is definitely held without any question on the next available opportunity. I really thought that it was Monday, that, uh, the, the fourth Monday of the month. One, two, three, four. So, that would be, um, eh, if it's really truly Monday, it would be Monday, July the twenty-second and then, eh, if it's really to, truly the twenty-third of July, then it's really truly twenty-five, eh, but, um, you, you really can't do that because, eh, this is, this is for, for the people. I, I do this for the people. I don't do this for the hundred dollars.
We all do it for the people. We have to do it when it's, uh, we have to go by the committee rules and there's no committee available for this heavy meeting, that's a week or so. So, we'll have to wait, so we're gonna move on to public safety.
Well, e- excuse me, e- excuse me, there, there were, uh, well, okay. Because I cannot talk to anybody in Public Works without permission, Ms. Worts, may I return these screwdrivers that I found at Brandon Plaza today at five o'clock, or would you like to return them to them personally?
I can return them.
Okay, pass.
Thank you. Mr. Vee, do you have a public safety report?
I sure do. All right, uh, part-time dispatcher Tracy Morello completed her last shift with the police department on June seventeen. Her daughter has become more active in tennis competitions and she doesn't want to miss an opportunity to watch her compete. And I agree with that. Uh, also, Whitehall Police now, I'm gonna question this chief, now provide residents with the option to sign up for non-solicitation list through the verbal website. Special thanks to assistant manager McGullough for creating the online site signup work. So, in other words, you go online, there's no solicitation at all in your neighborhood? I thought we had a, a lot some.
Not, not your neighborhood. Your residents can opt out, they don't want solicitors to come to their door.
So, if you don't want a solicitor coming to your door, you go online and you do it, go out.
I didn't think we could do that, I thought it was commercial.
Commercial, commercial.
And it's the, it's the individual right of the, uh, property owner, but it gives that list, that way the, the vendors know, right? That, that they have that list.
It's been about a decade since the no solicitation list has been updated. It used to be a function, well, maybe.
This is more than that.
It used to be a function of code enforcement. The solicitor would come downstairs, put the application in, pay a fee. We would do the background check. If you pass the background check, the chief would give the permit. Then we would, the chief would direct them to come up to code enforcement and purchase the no solicitation as a code enforcement. So, realizing that we really haven't done anything with it for fifteen years and it doesn't really make sense to keep people running back and forth, we're gonna do it through the police department, we're gonna make it easy for the residents and do, uh, online, ability to sign up online. The only thing that I ask, we believe we're gonna get a high volume of requests here in a very short period of time. There is one dispatcher that has volunteered to take all this online stuff and actually create the Excel spreadsheet that we will pass out to the solicitors. So, give us some time. I think it will be fully up and running, probably towards the fall, maybe winter months, but it's, it, it's, we should have been doing this a while ago and we just weren't.
Good question. Does this include political solicitations?
I don't think so.
No, this is commercial.
Okay, yeah.
Is your name on the list or just your address?
We ask you to provide your name, but we don't send your name. We just send out the street and the actual four-digit address. We're also gonna, we're gonna build up our database at the police department, so if we have to contact somebody in the neighborhood, that's why we're asking you to give your name, your address, your email and phone number. But we're not, we're only giving the actual physical street name and the, the numerics, so we're not.
Okay, that's good, cool.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vee, that's it?
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Vee? Okay, we'll move on to administrative services, Mrs. Dupree?
Member of the board.
And then the zoning, Mr. Luchetti?
Yes, uh, planning commission met last Wednesday, June twelfth, and continued its work on uses in the borough's commercial districts. And then last night, the zoning hearing board met and at that meeting, the board granted a variance request by Baldwin Whitehall School District, uh, Baldwin High School, uh, to permit a ten-foot-high chain-link fence along the tennis courts. Um, they denied a variance request at five-one-two-six South Passage Drive to permit a four-foot-high fence in the front yard of a corner lot of the property. And the, there was, there was a public hearing held on an appeal at four-five-four-four Doverdale Drive on a variance request to permit a sunroom and a required side yard setback. And the decision on that appeal is expected on the July sixteenth evening.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Luchetti?
We'll move on to the library, which I know Miss, um, our library director Paula Kelly was here. Is there any, anybody else that has a?
I'm here, it'll be short and sweet, so we scratch the surface as usual.
What's your name, please?
Jason Holiday, I'm the vice president of the board. Uh, first, this year, uh, once again, we are distributing experience kits. These experience kits are for families in the area to be able to get into several museums and, uh, Heinz History Center, those types of places. So, we're doing that once again. Um, I think most people know about the little free libraries that have gone up throughout and the ones that are coming. There was actually, the scouts were in the library at the beginning of the month and they did a book drive for those little free libraries, um, just to give them, uh, the credit where credit is due. They collected forty-five boxes of books, so those will be well-stocked for a little while. Um, in addition to that, so many events happen at the library and I'm not gonna name all of them because we'd be here a lot longer and I have a three-and-a-half-year-old that's waiting to go to bed right now. Uh, but there are so many things for kids, seniors, mothers, my wife, um, as I mentioned, is a mother, that's how that works. And, um, she's actually, she, she's a doctor of occupational therapy for pediatrics and, uh, her network has grown significantly just by being a part of those, not only from a professional standpoint, but also just from being a mom, because really, uh, I think that sometimes you can be very secluded becoming a new mother and, uh, there's been some great programming there, as well as for seniors, both at the library and, uh, at several of the different communities throughout, uh, throughout. One of the, uh, subscriptions that Paula was actually able to get is called Parent TV and it's a subscription model. So, it's not a case that you have to go to the library to get this service, it's an online model. However, our residents will be able to get that for free and it's everything from, uh, what to expect when you're expecting to behavioral issues for kids. Um, my wife's been watching those for me and, um, uh, there's so many great resources related, or through the library, uh, even though I give this report and I don't even mention books because we already know that. Uh, so, if you wanna deeper dive, let me know or you can come to our meeting, which is the second Wednesday of each month and you'll get to hear a lot more of me.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have our Parks Committee report, Mrs. Dupree?
Oh, you used to get elaborate.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Miss Dupree!
I have some really exciting news about the park. As, as some of you know, we had talked about, Tulletson was interested in pu- putting some very interesting playground equipment at Highlands Park. There was a meeting with them, uh, they think they can use our, some of our old equipment and merge it with the new equipment. Maybe all we have to do is move the bleachers, the...
We don't think we have to do that now.
No, so, you know, it, it sounds really good and Tulletson is willing to pick up the cost. All we have to do is agree to mulch every two years to maintain it. Now, there are some things that need worked out, so we've asked our solicitor and their solicitor to get together to work out the details of, you know, okay, this is broken, who has the right to take it down? This needs painted, who has the right to do it? Just those kinds of technical details. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the proper borough officials to sign the agreement with ACLD Tulletson School for the purchase and installation of a new playground set at their sole cost with borough-provided mulching at Highland Park pending final approval to the form of the agreement by the borough manager and the borough solicitor.
So, move.
Uh, I, I have a question first. So, um, there was some discussion in the first meeting that I went to regarding some non-conventional mulch solution?
Yes.
Um, wa- was it that or was it, um, a, a conventional wood mulch?
No, it's an, um, ADA-compatible mulch that would enable, the, the features that Tulletson is looking for.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the mulch that they were proposing sounded really exceptional.
Yes, it's ADA-compliant, um, and focuses on sensory pieces to meet the needs of their student population. Um, so that is the type of mulch that we would be responsible for keeping up with.
And my understanding is there's difference in cost is not.
No, I, actually, we think it's cheaper than traditional mulch.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
A win-win.
Yeah, yes, yes. So, um, they, that, that's why I wanted to, um, to be cognizant of that. And, uh, the other question is, eh, is there any similarities that we, we had regarding our agreement with, um, Shim and the Jefferson Regional Foundation regarding the, the playground equipment that was installed a day about ten years ago now in Prospect Park?
That was a set that Jefferson Regional Foundation, uh, I believe Shim applied for the grant through them, um, Kaboom Playgrounds, and they, that installed that, um, years ago. Yeah, yes, it's, it's a volunteer community effort they, um, helped install.
Eh, yes, because I, I do want it on the record that there, there's still a, a broken piece of equipment.
Because the labor can't get in touch with the manufacturer.
Oh, okay, um, I, I had asked, um, uh, back in January of Public Works to, to go ahead and least, um, uh, paint it right so that it would be less of a tripping hazard.
I'll have to discuss that with fellow board supervisor.
Thank you, okay.
All right, so Kathy made the motion, is there a second?
Yes.
About stone.
Well, she made the motion first when she was reading it. Motion is made. Motion is made in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Uh, I do have a question also, uh, I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that this motion was on the agenda. Was it on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then, then, eh, well, and Robert, thank you.
Okay, I'd also like to...
Well, wait a minute, Mason's motion. Made in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, say thank you.
I'd also like to start moving forward with Overlook Park. I'd hate to stop in the middle of that project. We only bid half of it because of the time we needed to break it down somewhere. But if we don't start getting the design ready and getting it out to bid, it's not gonna be even startable until... It takes four months to get something to be able to work on. So, I'd like to make a motion that we start, uh, we ask Gateway to start coming up with the plans and getting the forms ready so that we can go out to bid.
Mrs. Dupree, all you can do is make it tonight, you can just make a motion.
Make a motion, get on the agenda for the next meeting. That now puts us in the middle of Ju- I'm, I'm not arguing with you, but I'm trying to give a timeline. Puts us into the middle of July, it takes at least three months to advertise it and get it back. And I would love to have that park open by the middle of July next year, if we get a winner like this past one. And we'll just keep our fingers crossed, but I'd like to get that on the calendar.
Make a motion, put it on the next.
Right.
So, you wanna state that and, you know?
I believe this is a huge motion, correct me if I'm wrong, is a motion to add to the next agenda, consideration or motion to authorize Gateway Engineers to design Overlook Phase Two. Is there a second?
Just one, just one point. Essentially, the design is, is, is complete. There just needs to be some plant cleanup, uh, because we had, we had started the overlook project with the full build-out. So, we just need to do some plant cleanup and essentially this affects an authorization, so it's not a, it's rework.
Could we do it maybe with and without the walking trail, the parking, parking, the walking trail? I spent much too much time in this, that's okay. They have a mister up there and some little boy turned it right at me yesterday, I was wondering. Mastermind's language. I don't, I'm not sure we need that walking trail around the outside.
That was phase three.
I'm sorry, straight, straight.
Something.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, we have a motion to put that on. There's a motion and a second, I believe, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I'm opposed, um, just because of, we already raised taxes and I'd hate to keep doing it. And I mean, the only other thing left at Overlook is the baseball field and the basketball court, right? The base?
And the steps.
We're gonna step right now.
Now, the other steps down in Spring Valley.
Okay, then I agree, yeah.
Okay, that's your answer. It would definitely help if you could, eh, at least ballpark what, um, that scale move-back plan so, um, would entail when you're engineering it. Thank you. Okay, all right, is there any new additions?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, wanna bring up one subject, because we're gonna be meeting in a second session, on the Good Neighbor Awards. You know, we don't need to get involved in that. So, can you, you know, put it in the borough, or the borough email? You know, can we also contact the South Coast Record to detach? And then can we also contact the South Coast街道的 Patch just to put it in a couple other places? Is that, I mean, we don't have.
I don't know if they run all that often, but.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah, just, just looking, just to get a little bit more uh exposure for the Good Neighbors Award.
Remind them.
You have all the language to watch it, right?
Okay.
All right.
Any other additions?
I, I do, I do. And in honor of Juneteenth, I wanna thank Mr. Mayor for that beautiful proclamation. Uh, I would like to take this time to honor uh somebody who was likely a resident of the greater Baldwin Township area who was a Civil War hero for the Union. And this is uh General Alexander Hayes. I took today to um visit his grave in Lawrenceville. If you were ever wondering that the Hayes neighborhood was part of Baldwin Township as Whitehall was part of Baldwin Township in the, the mid eighteen hundreds. And eh because of, of um eh General uh Hayes' eh epic uh support of the, the Union that many, many battles were, were fought and won for the, the Union forces such as the Battle of the Gettysburg. There was a statue of him there. And he was indeed uh a resident of Pittsburgh at the time that he decided to enlist. He was over forty years old. He had no obligation to enlist other than to his country. God bless America.
So, I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And happy Fourth of July, everybody. Remember, we have no third of July meeting, July seventeen.